All right, good morning. I want to call in order to re-schedule Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, November 1st, 2016, and ask if everyone please join the board as we honor America with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, first item on the agenda is public comment number one. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anybody wishing to do so, please come to the microphone now. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to consideration of minutes. And this is both the September 30th appointment minutes and the minutes from our regular meeting on October 25th.
Move to a doubt.
And I'll second. Is there any corrections, additions, or notations?
None.
Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Minutes passed. Personnel actions as listed, Marty.
Considered to accept as proposed.
Second, any discussion? Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions passed. Claims?
We would consider claims.
And I'll second. Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims passed. Consent agenda, please add road closure 1722 and 1723 and utility permits 17-036.
Move to accept consent agenda with above noted changes or additions.
And I'll second. Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. No public hearing items. Additional items, consideration of Resolution 1735, amending FY17 appropriations. Old Mark, always wanting money.
Morning, Mrs. Mark, ladies.
Lisa, how are you ending up with the election?
Oh, it's just really funny. Um... Sarcastically, she says.
Oh.
Yeah, we're doing fine. Let's do show.
There's no business. Seven days from now.
Seven days from now.
That's right.
What I have in front of you is what I threatened to bring in front of you last week or two weeks ago, and I said I was going to amend the appropriations beginning of the fiscal year in order to start spending money. We did 50% appropriation for all departments with a few exceptions, countywide, general kind of demo we had and did, and we're just coming right out to bat. At this point in time, I have before you an appropriations amendment that adds an addition of 45% to the departments in the appropriations. I did 45% across the board for an additional appropriation. The other 5% can be appropriated within the 2017.
Questions?
None.
Anything else to add? Let's see, this is not a public hearing. I'd ask, anybody want to address Resolution 1735? All right, board, action.
I would move to a doubt. 1735, amending FY17 appropriations.
And I'll second. Discussion. Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 1735 passes.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Back to work.
Yeah, I gotta go back. Sorry.
Morning, Cal.
Next item is discussion and consideration of fire alarm signal separation. Cal, how was the fishing?
Windy, but fishing was excellent.
How cold was it? So Cal goes up to Canada every year about this time?
Mid-thirties. There was snow on the day I left. I left a little early because the wind wouldn't settle down. Excellent. Big northern fishing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. My son always comes back with pictures of the stories to tell. That's part of how not a fisherman my son is, so.
All right, we're talking about fireworks.
Okay, years ago, prior fire chief insisted on having the Justice Center on one signal alarm at the Justice Center. I mean, anything goes off anywhere in the building, the whole building alarms. The buildings themselves were built with firewalls. So there's three, actually, there could be seven different separate buildings out there separated by firewalls. What I asked the present fire chief, I mentioned to him the problem with these sprinkler heads getting knocked off in the jail, which causes disruption through the whole building. There's a serious trial going on. Well, trials are serious. They have to evacuate the building wherever they're at. So I mentioned this to him and asking him, can we separate this back? And he says absolutely. So I got verbal and written approval from the current fire chief here in Nevada to do the separations so that we can eliminate these problems that are happening. The price tag was a little more than I thought it was going to be. That's why I'm here today. I felt it was important that we move on this as soon as possible, but I want the board to be aware and make the decision if we can do it now or if you want me to wait till budget time to work on this. Just in the paperwork I did send with, there was three, three in September alone.
Right.
Two by one individual and one by another one. So I was hoping the jail administrator would be here today to elaborate on, this has been an ongoing problem for years that we've seen, so.
Right, and we're not going to take care of that problem by doing this, but what we're going to take care of is the disruption to the rest of the building every time one of these happens.
Exactly.
So we've got an inmate that's kicking off sprinkler heads, right?
Yes, and we've also, they've come out with a new, more vandal resistant fire sprinkler head that is much harder for them to...
Vandalize.
...to vandalize, in hopes that they would see them on the camera in time to get in and stop it before it happens. But, you know, not only the people evacuating all the time and then saying, well, is this a fire? Is it just a drill? What's going on? But also, you know, if you remember last year, I spent a lot of money on putting magnets up. Well, every time these go off, those doors close. Now we're finding even the doors with magnets, they're propping them open with the chocks again, so the magnets...
Yeah, we don't want people to sensitized to the alarm. When the alarm goes off, the first thought shouldn't be, oh, somebody just kicked off a sprinkler head again.
So there's a little bit of equipment hardware that needs to be added. We may need to run a few cables, but the majority of it is proprietary programming of simplex fire alarm system to accomplish this. So, and it's $7,000, which is above $5,000.
And how's your budget looking so far this year?
It's really tight. That's my concern.
So we need to, we need, on approval of this, we need to consider adding $7,000 or thereabouts later in the year when you start to get close.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So Marty, normally, the way the board has operated is, when we have a request like this, first thing we do is look to see if we can do it out of currently budgeted dollars. Cal's been phenomenal at that through the years. In fact, I don't remember, I don't remember a time in the last three or four years that we've had to add money into your budget at the end of the year. You've been absorbing the unforeseen things in what we've budgeted. He's given us a heads up that that may not be the case this time. And so if we approve this, in my mind, we would also be approving the reality that we may have to go find $7,000 at the end of the year in additional dollars to put into facilities. Absolutely. Questions for Cal?
So is this going to help by doing it to break it out to what parts of the building the actual alarm goes off in? Is that going to give any notice to the fire department at all, or is that just tell us where it's at?
Well, at this building, we aren't hooked up to simplex monitoring system. It brings into master control. Master control then can make the decision whether the fire department needs to be called or if it's an actual fire, if other areas need to be evacuated. So that's the way this system works out there. And we have staff there 24/7. They monitor the fire alarm.
So now walk me through procedurally, if a sprinkler head gets damaged in the jail, if we make these changes, what alarms will go off?
In the jail only.
Okay.
Sheriff only, if there's a problem in the sheriff's office. Court side only, if there's a problem over there. It's like it's three independent...
We're separating it out into three separate areas instead of one.
Yes.
Okay.
Glad to see you get a fire chief who wants to work with you.
Absolutely. He's been very, very helpful in many things since we've got him on board and glad to have him.
So if you're okay with it, Marty, I would like a...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I would move to approve the $7,000 for the Tycox and Platts Burnell Fire System at the Justice Center for 7,000 dollars.
And I'll second it, and I want to just make the note that this board fully recognizes that that $7,000 may not be able to be absorbed in the existing budget. This may entail an addition of $7,000 to the facility budgets this year.
That's fine.
Anything further?
Questions that accounts will do a review of.
Okay, Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It passes. Thank you, Cal.
Thank you for your time.
We're glad you're back.
Yeah, me too.
Morning, Leanne. Thanks for coming in today.
What if I wanted to skip this next item and go to something else? Discussion and consideration of proposed amendments to the Story County Economic Development Group bylaws and program guidelines. We also have the chair of that group here today. Jennifer, how about if you come on up as well?
Morning, Jennifer. Good meeting last week.
All right, so I'm going to give a 20-second history of what happened here. Ongoing conference, this group was established in the late 80s, early 90s. It's been a great group for Story County, but its mission and focus has clearly changed over the last few years. The group has been talking internally for several years about the possibility of updating their organizational documents to reflect the realities of how they're operating. A year or so, a year ago, as part of the budget process, this group asked for the Story County Board of Supervisors to increase funding from, I think it was, it's $100,000 to $125,000, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And that request was turned down at that point, and one of the main reasons given was we want your organizational documents to be updated prior to any increases or changes in the funding. So the group's been working hard on that, and here's where we are.
I think I'm going to start with the bylaws.
Okay.
And just highlight for the board and members of the audience what the proposed changes are and rationale for those changes. Just ask questions as we go to. Just starting with the purpose statement, Section 1.02, clarifying just some, some annual reports are necessary, some annual budgeting, and then referencing the program guidelines. And that is beneficial because then not only do the program guidelines have the types of projects that are allowed through the pool funds, the project funds, I had to get the language right now because we've changed terms too. And that's a good connection between the two documents. And then going on to the next page of the membership, referencing the appointed representative form. Jennifer has gone ahead and drafted one that each of the communities will use to actually assign who that appointed representative is. And that would be done by January 1st each year, really to formalize the structure of the executive committee and the membership of the Story County Economic Development Group.
And to this point, it's been really whoever attends from any of the communities has been deemed to be part of this group.
And then at the end of that section, add two new ex-oficial members that would be a member of the Conservation Board and the Metropolis Planning and Zoning Commission. And really, those two entities are dealing with activities that are in the economic development realm, and they're non-voting members. I think they bring good insight and bring that communication back to their respective boards. And then Section 1.04, fiscal year, clarifying, just like other governmental entities, this operates on the fiscal year of July 1st to June 30th. Article 2, Sections 2.01 and 2.02, really set up where the principal offices, obviously, as Jennifer's the chair, the mailing address could be different each every two years, but the principal offices reference this building. And the website would be Story County's official website, which we all know, storycountyidol.com. Under Section, Article 3, officers setting forth the elections in terms of audits that are on an even calendar year, so every two years. And actually, last week, maybe it was? Yes. Last record time, last week, we're an even year. And so the election didn't occur last week in the term of two years, on a July 1st and June 30th basis, again, matching the fiscal year. The secretary position was removed out of the bylaws, and I'll get back to that with reference to Section 4.06. There's some, there are some technical assistance that Story County can provide, but wasn't necessary to be redundant, have that in the bylaws. Article 4 adds language to make sure that his recognition meetings are public meetings and subject to requirements in chapter 1, code highway. And that notice of that meeting is put in accordance with that section and other requirements we have. With that, I would assume that direction would be given to staff, likely me, to make sure that the line of post should be posted on the website and the voting board, which would be the official voting board. And then Section 4.06, like I just mentioned, the secretary position was removed, but the minute section was added to, to make sure that's identified, that the minutes could be taken by the Story County administrative staff, whether it's myself or three members in position like Drew's. And then we would bring those forward for approval by the Board of Supervisors. Under Article 5, voting in roles of reporter, so presumption of dissent was added in Section 5.03. I'm going to stop right here. I failed to say something. What was very interesting is we dealt into this, not one of us had a complete copy in the bylaws. So there are some additions that are new, that we need to be new. We just don't know if they're there or not. So they may not be new, so I should have said that. Conflict of interest was added to Article 6, so that would be standard language in the bylaws. Article 8 talks about staff assistance, again, going back to April, the board to identify myself or someone else to provide technical assistance. And then under Article 9, the last page, just clarifying how the board considers amendments, and then how that's communicated back to the Story County Economic Development Group. And lastly, where the original documents are stored so that we don't run into situations like we did. And you'll know that these will be recorded to the wonderful, so we know the world as we develop and report to us. Any questions in the bylaws?
Jennifer, this is for you more than Leanne. Do you feel like that this is now an adequate representation of not only the way the group is currently functioning, but our hopes and expectations for the way the group will function into the future?
It is, absolutely. And the group went through it with a pretty much a nine-tooth comb, sometimes changing words very minorly to make sure that it was very over, you know, had an overall sense of what we're doing and how we're going about it.
Good. I mean, it looks to me, so I was frustrated by our lack of formality in that group through the years. We couldn't put our hands on a complete copy of the original bylaws. The group was functioning, but there wasn't a real good mechanism to tell us how the group was supposed to be functioning. I'm really appreciative of what you went through. I went through these pretty closely, and it looks to me like exactly what we're hoping for this group. So thanks. Questions, comments?
Not having looked at what you previously had, just going through these like you did, I guess I see everything here. It gives me comfort in saying this is what you would expect, that a group operating this would have to provide, so I see no blurry omissions, I guess.
I just, I have a couple of comments on the guidelines that I just wanted to get to you real quick. As I stumbled at the beginning, the pool, we've gone ahead and really clarified the two worth of $100,000 is, I was divvied up and distributed. The annual allocation is what goes per capita to the communities. That gets determined based on per capita.
But only for communities that participate in this group?
For eligible communities. And eligibility criteria is set up in the guidelines then, too. What is the second funding mechanism then is the project funds. And that really is what was confusing people because they're called pool funds. You normally think of pool funds as the ones over the annual allocation. Those are set up now that it's a maximum of 15% or whatever the pool funds are a lot annually by the board, so in this particular, up to $15,000 can go towards those project funds. There's a lot of discussion as to the eligibility criteria and the types of projects. I think everyone's on the same board now, the types of projects, the expectation is can be submitted and ultimately approved with that. There is set up now the guidelines, so a procedure though, for the chair to communicate the allocation to the auditor's office and then ultimately receive funding from the board of supervisors for both the annual allocations and then the project funds. And that was a little bit, that was an area where I'm appreciative of having additional guidance and information so that we're on the same page with the procedure.
And this used, the appropriation of the funds used to be on a, what everybody assumed was a reimbursement process. We've shifted it so it's more at the beginning of fiscal year instead of the end to deflate the accounting for funding. And if they're having span, you know, over from this, from this group, it will be cleared up earlier in the fiscal year versus toward the end.
Yeah, we had one year where we didn't get stuff turned in on time, and so it caused it to carry over to a new fiscal year, and that just creates all kinds of issues. So I'm appreciative, you know, having everything in by June 15th every year gives us enough time to deal with it. So any questions or thoughts? Wayne?
The only question, I'm sorry I'm being a little late, but got the wife home, okay, so things are doing great. Were there major, when you said you were having discussions about the allocations and the kinds of projects that we had approved in the past, were there some areas that the group felt that they'd like to see included that maybe that weren't looked at, you know? I'm thinking of the $100,000 that we're talking about, not some of the other special projects, where they... I think the fact that some of the centers was looking at, again, was the structure seemed to be somewhat loosely defined and laid out, and we were looking for a little bit more uniformity and consistency so that as you went from year to year, you know, it made the application that much easier to identify. But did you see where there's some areas that they talked about that they'd like to see included, that are the categories broad enough to cover any of those projects?
They did for like the project funds, they did expand from four identified areas that would qualify to several...
But added in an extra step before those funds can be released, right? So Wayne, they were quick. It was always a little nebulous in my mind, what was eligible and what wasn't eligible. This, to me, looks like it opens up more eligibility, sends it through that group first, but then it has to come to the board of supervisors prior to awarding those project funds. So you've got two components, right? You've got the per capita funds, which is just a division based on number of people to the, to the communities that are part of this, part of this group. Then the second one is project funds, which currently is about $15,000. And now I think it opens up these communities to be really kind of aggressive with what kind of projects they bring forward, but it requires then a presentation to the board of supervisors, which is a new step that we have not had.
I know there was one particular item that they discussed that they, which is whether funding can go towards staff and administrative costs, that they allow, they're allowing in the annual allocation, but they're not allowing in project funds.
Project funds will be things like brochures and welcome signs and specific one-off projects, not ongoing costs. Other questions, comments?
No more than I expected.
Action.
Jennifer ran a very good meeting last week. I think you had a lot of buy-in, and I, of course, think the takeaways are that, because I think a lot was offered up all down the long run by the time this went.
If there's nothing further, I would sure entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendments to the bylaws.
I'm going to make that motion.
I'm just out that proposed amendments is placed before us today for the Economic Development Group.
I would second that motion.
Further discussion? Chief.
Aye.
Clinton.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes. Thank you guys very much for your work.
Thank you.
No agency reports today, departmental reports. We do have Margaret James, environmental health. Margaret?
Good morning, everybody. Ninety-eight Wayne, go ahead and ask some good questions for us.
Yeah, you know, I know all end of this house stuff.
Good to hear it. Yeah. Cause our patient up here. Okay. Okay, I'll start on top of the subjects. Let's see, so we're not going to be, 2015, it doesn't look like so far, we've had 70 new subject applications, 68 installed. Let's see, what else can I say? Repairs, there's actually a few more than that. The picture up top, that's one of the more recent technologies. It's a heat filter. Now we're switching over to COCO filter. And the hard to develop or replacement systems go that route. This is a request that I had never gotten before. One of the helpers asked me to come out and help assess the land that he's considering buying for subject land application, okay?
Good.
And I love that. I love that he's thinking about, you know, the environmental stuff. So I work with Leanne on coming up, so she helped me with the flood plain interpretation. And then, as you can see in the left photo there, the floodway, there's no way that they can land apply in the floodway there. However, in the blue area, where it does flood frequently, I'll say that, or it gets very wet, there are no restrictions, and so he could have land applied there. That's not good. And so Leanne plans next year maybe to address some of those issues as the flood plain manager. I went out to the soils, and soil, it's almost like a kitchen table up there, so that's going to be, that's excellent. You want things that are flat when you're applying sewage. Distance from development, this is the attractive thing about this piece of land because it's straight south of the house quarry and away from any houses in that, and so less complaints. So that's excellent. But the soils, they were true to the mapping, they're zook and coal and still build. Still build sounds like they're suspicious. They were all very high clay content and high water table. So I told, I recommended he not purchase this land based on soils because I would not allow them to land apply. So now he's looking at other sites possibly around that they would apply. So for wells, we've done six total wells, two water and four geothermal. We've done 13 well pluggings, two rehabs, lots of sampling going on, 61. We're going to wait on the arsenic testing toward a little bit later in the fiscal year because that's, we want to spend it on plenty more than arsenic testing. At the end of the year, we'll focus on arsenic. And transfer inspections, 18. Those are just the wells. Trans to counties and that's just talking about, we received $26,000. We've spent 14. We're riding on track. That's good because this is the first year that DNR, no, IPH is going to redistribute some of that spare money. So they're not going to take any of ours away. We might even get a little bit more this year. Pools, tanning and tanning are, that's one contract that those three items come under. 45 pool facilities, one of those violation and citation issue, and that's been squared away so far. And one new pool, we get the opportunity to meet with the state, we work strictly on rules for that new pool. He comes down and inspects it, we get along, and we learn so much from that, and our inspections get better and better from learning from him. New pools are so much easier to inspect because they're not cobbled all together. The old ones, it's just like an octopus when you go in the, when you operate, you know, it's the operations room, so. Okay, that's good. Let's see, seven tanning facilities, nothing going on with that. And 19 tanning facilities, and we administered one for exam.
That feels like that's up. Is that up? Tanning?
Tanning, up.
Yeah. Are there more tanning facilities today than there have been?
I think we added, we might have added one.
Yeah, it felt like it was higher. Okay.
Unenforcement, one overdue time of transfer. I didn't dream in the reveal. Installation renewed, that was a big deal, that was a big deal. I didn't, he didn't follow the permit requirements, and so I had went out and met with him. I didn't, he didn't follow the permit requirements and so I had went out and meet with him, it was ugly, but we got it done. So he might not be interested in working in St. Louis County.
If he wants to do it right, then we'd love to have him in St. Louis County.
That's right, welcome. He is certified. Six outstanding notice of violations, so first view, I'll just mention what's in there. They still haven't gotten their paperwork into DNR, declaring that they're not a public system, brand new speak. He did move one more trailer into the loop, so he's moving forward on, on getting that project done.
So Marty's on board of health now, but when I was, it seems like December first was he dropped in there, right?
Correct.
So we're one month away and it sounds like he's got on a lot of stuff that he has not done.
A lot has to happen between now and then, yeah, but he is working in that direction, I will say that.
Good.
Lincoln Theater subject, they still haven't gotten their subject in. Let's see, what else? And then complaints and Marty, we talked about this at board health, there's a new six building in Nevada owned by the church and this week is their deadline, so we need to talk to the priest there and see what they come up with to answer those problems. Training and meetings, I don't bore you with reading all these, but we are required to know a lot of oddball things and we have to retain certification, so we go to a lot of oddball classes and that, it's fun, it keeps things interesting. I am on the board of the, the subject, the subject board. I tell you what, that's a lot of work, the planning, you know, the comments playing, I've never done that before, it's a lot of work.
Well, thank you for doing it, it's important, right? Yep.
Thank you. Mrs. Colletti, Dakota Access Pipeline, we have had no calls, no issues that I know of as far as marijuana health is. President Wong, I already talked about that. Site review for bed and breakfast conducted, we did come up with a decent subject system option for them, so they're going forward with that. We've had a new sanitaryian for Harden County coming down, we're training her, I think she's a good match for that county. Strategic plan update for water quality, we're with Leanne on that. And they are carrying three of us participating in that for Martin Department.
Thank you.
Ironbridge subdivision plan review, so we're working on that subdivision, the planning is only, filling most, I'm sorry. Just working on that and getting the subject squared away with the engineer. And then, this is an interesting thing, this just had the history, we did a CUPV for Hickory Grove Park, they're adding that shower house. So, so we're gonna, you know, we just wanted to make sure that lagoon was doing what it needed to do. So Mike and I and two of his guys, Bo and Russ, went out there to try to figure out if the effluent is going from the shower room and making it down. So we put dye in it and that's, you don't get more fun than putting dye and water and following it, that's just a lot of fun. So, so we lifted up manholes and slowly went there and then it wasn't showing up in the lagoon, we were like, you know? So after doing a lot of things and digging around and that, the two guys got in the loop and pushed the duct weed away and there was the dark.
It was, okay, it was.
So yay. So, so the one thing I did see is the fan really needs to be repaired down here because that is a definite requirement of the state DNR to have, you know, for safety reasons and then progress.
So Margaret, you may not know this, Wayne, this question may be for you and maybe it's more a Mike Cox question, but at one point we were working with Central Iowa Rural Water to, to end up attaching to Colo's lagoons. Where does that stand? That fell through?
It's, it's interesting you mention this because that was gonna be my question because I was at the conservation special for a meeting last night and so there was a little update on this rural sewer project and I would have to say that Mike Cox said this whole idea of learning about dye and all of that, he said it was quite an education paid for him. But he did say that the issue was Colo itself and it seems to be tied in with the mobile home park there and what there may not happen with that. They are going to hopefully have some ongoing communication regarding that. I probably shouldn't comment too far with that because we've not set up a meeting with Colo yet regarding, is there a wriggle room, is there a way that we can revisit? The concept was possibly even a partnership type of arrangements rather than just as a, a user of so forth. So there's gonna be a little bit more with that, but I think the whole fact that the MRA agency, review team and with the maybe permitting process, some steps that they didn't anticipate. And so it's kinda slowed the project down just a little bit, but I think in the, in the end they feel very good about the direction that it's just gonna go in. I certainly wanna thank you for working directly with Mike and, and his staff in the city because we wanna do it right.
Sure. Well, medium term though, medium term, our lagoon is not accepted. We either need to go in and do something with a new lagoon or repair that one, or we need to tie in with Colo. But Margaret, what I'm taking, my takeaway here is that all said and done, once two brave people got it new and pushed out into the middle of this thing, we're good that the new shower building is in fact delivering to the lagoon as we expect.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah. It might be a legal lagoon and that's why conservation is looking into replacement. The plan on the board now is the trailer park north and the county combined efforts to put a new lagoons off county property.
Good.
And having Central Iowa manage that for us. And Central Iowa, according to Mike, they are waiting on engineering and that's the whole of it.
Good.
And.
It is definitely fault. Anything for Margaret?
No, her slide I thought was pretty good and Wayne, who probably talked about this too, but if everybody wants to talk about bridges, I wanna talk about subject systems. Can you put that first slide back up, please?
Let's see, can you see if you need the lights on?
I guess conceptually.
This thing?
Yep.
On a county basis, on a water quality basis, and we can tell you what we got here, we've got numbers, we've got two hundred and eighty some bridges.
Two eighty-two.
Okay, as we see, enlarge that for me, please.
Yeah, I can, let me think here.
Slide show.
Slide show, yes, slide show and from the beginning, no.
Well, yeah, they just gave one.
Heard like, got it.
There we go. I mean, is that, at this point in time, is seven new subject system permits? I mean, what are we doing on a yearly basis? I mean, on the county, I mean, how many, that reflects systems out in the county, correct? A subject system? I guess I'm looking for.
That reflects replacement systems, total replacement systems, not repairs.
And then you.
And or a lagoon.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's not a con, I mean, it, it keeps you busy.
Well, we have a count on our bridges, we have an account on our subject systems in the county.
Oh.
Would you have, have to guess?
Oh, something like that, does that sound bad?
I would've said somewhere between two and four thousand.
Yeah, but I can, you know.
Well, it's, it's just one of those numbers that you see, you know, Mike spoke to it this summer when he was talking about water clarity and water quality, if you go, I'll just deny you subject systems, they're gonna be a difference in addition to some shore armor and whatnot, it's just like, this is obviously gonna be making a difference if you're putting in new and current encoded systems in here if you're doing, I would have to say we're going in the right direction. Is this a number that would reflect what we would see year over, I mean, any year, this would be about at that point?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we were up a little last year over this year, but that, two factors, there's Hickory Grove work that we did, which we funded a lot of that.
Yes, and camera states.
And two camera states.
Yeah.
Now this year, so tell me how we count what, what the irons do. So the irons.
That's not counted yet.
Not counted yet, but will it count as subject systems even though those are, those are shared system?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's a, yeah.
Option system.
Well, different kind of system than we're used to seeing.
Oh, no, no, each one will have to get a permit, so that's.
You're doing, yeah. So I don't actually view us as down, I mean, you look at where we were, what we've been in the, in the sixties the last several years and we bumped up to eighty, eighty something fifteen, is that right? But, am I reading the numbers right or am I?
You know, I'm looking at those and thinking, why do we have two eighty-twos and two sixty-sixes? Those old numbers are suspect and that's our, our software that's, I think, pulling numbers from the wrong fields. When we had the new computer stuff, things went pretty haywire with our calculating, so.
Yeah.
But I think it was around eighty, but we're not as high as last year.
And remind me the action this board took with time, time of transfer now that's new for, for story handle, a couple of years ago.
Time of transfer, well, you know, we used to have, we used to have inspection program in the county and the state has that and just like the pay boats, we can't touch that.
Okay.
So our program actually went backwards.
But it went way backwards to start with.
Yeah. Yeah, because there's that whole list of insecurities.
Right.
Consecquinity, the divorce, the bankruptcy, so the banks don't have to put anything in. So all of those where we used to inspect them and require replacement, they don't. So it's, so we're still back, back compared to our programs.
Right, right.
But statewide it's better because there's so many counties that didn't have any inspection program. So statewide, we're all better off. Countywide, no.
Good, thank you. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Margaret? Margaret, thank you very much. No other reports. Public forum number two, opportunity for members of the public to address items not on today's agenda. Board may not take any action due to the pharmacy open meetings law, but we might do, do so in the future. Anyone wishing to address the board on any topic? Seeing no one moving the microphone, liaison, the committee meeting updates, Wayne?
Nothing on liaison and just that Conservation Board last night did meet to discuss the money that was received from the pipeline that was approved last week, that went into general fund and a resolution will be coming forth next week. Good discussion, felt very good about where we were in that process. Then there was considerable discussion about the Iowa project and the three eight cents and the legislation that is currently there. I gave them just a quick update that at the ISAC board director meeting that I attended last Thursday in private, representatives, the lobbyists from the Iowa League of Cities as well as the executive director came and presented to us. And what was interesting is that the League of Cities is going to be proposing perhaps a change in the distribution formula, which would give cities a little bit more of a piece of pie. I get the impression that ISAC and counties are not willing to jump on board. One of the discussions and Margaret, I don't know, when we're talking about water quality, as of course you all know, water quality is the buzzword right now. And so some of the three eight cents was attempted to be tied to the water quality initiatives. However, if you look at the legislation that was passed, they clearly define where those dollars would go and what type of projects. And counties believe that that's what the legislature should basically do. So what the League of Cities is saying, that they might be interested in if they wanted to change that to a one cent rather than three eight cents and then the additional dollars could go toward water quality initiatives, at least they would be supported. So trying to get the foreign bureau in online with the support of that activity, I think is, are gonna be problematic. The issue for counties is that once you start talking about changing the distribution formula, that opens up a whole different can of worms and the likelihood of getting consensus in that area may mean that the three eight cents funding for other conservation approved projects could be hampered. So that's something that ISAC is gonna be watching very closely. I think everybody is convinced that water quality is gonna be a topic that the legislature is going to be addressing this year. The key is where the funding is gonna come from. You know, whether the governor's proposal that talked about some of those dollars from education over a period of time would be utilized or what have you. So I think we need to be in tune with that. I, along with Matt Cosgrove, who is the conservation director that's on the ISAC board, really feel that the supervisors are gonna wanna work closely with our conservation board statewide to make sure that we have a common message, that we need to be on the same page when we communicate with our legislators about this three eight cents and how, what projects should be there. And I think that's something that is basically going to be another factor. And then, so beside the Iowa, the only other thing to basically report from that meeting is that there will be some ongoing discussions with some of the language change that will be presented to the general assembly in terms of some of the guidelines of how we operate as, as a board and as an entity. But I think that the legislative objectives, as maybe you sat in on last week, pretty much are the same, the board pretty much approved those, were just a few minor word changes in one particular category just to make it a little bit clearer and give directions to our lobbyists where the counties were basically gonna go. But that's still gotta be ratified by full membership in the fall, at fall school. So all in all, it was an excellent meeting and I think we came out of that clearly with an attitude of county supervisors, ISAC board. And one of the questions to deal with, when do you vote in support of something or do you take a, a position of, of undecided? The minimum wage is one of those topics that came up. I don't know exactly where the ISAC board is gonna come down on. Currently, right now, they are advocating for the state to take this up on a unified basis, so they may, they're supportive of the study and moving toward that, but I don't think they're gonna take a position as to saying what the increment should be at one, at any given point at this time. They're gonna wanna study and wait and see how this is all gonna flush out and then before a decision is made, they will reach out to supervisors across the state to get their input in terms of should we switch from an undecided to a support or what have you. Nine times out of ten, when it's controversial, it's usually an undecided vote is what the lobbyists will basically do during that entity. But this will certainly be something that I'm sure supervisor candidates are interested in. That minimum wage is gonna be a topic of discussion at, at the state house this year. Where it's gonna go, we don't know, but I think that most of the people are somewhat in agreement is they don't wanna see all the, the counties all having a different, different wage, if, if it all possible. But, so that's gonna be of interest to us as we see down the road. So that's all I can do at this time. We will, we have another meeting late November, right before the fall of school and that will give a little bit more direction to us.
Yep, so if the League of Cities wanna make, want to ensure that Iowa does not get funded this year, then they should come, come ahead with a proposal, but that just seems like a good way to me, when you've got something that already passed with a substantial margin from the voters of Iowa and then you wanna go in and tinker with it, it just seems like a good way to give those opponents of it a way to keep anything happening. So, thanks, thanks for representing us on that stuff. Marty?
Had a pretty substantive economic development group meeting in Maxwell last week. I think it was a free flowing exchange of conceptuals and solicitations of pretty good ideas. You have peer communities that represent each other together and I think that they found some common ground to see some tangents going forward, let's see what comes from that. St. Louis County Rec Center group, I believe, is, if not at that point, are going to be moving to adopt the siding plan, potential rec facility in Nevada on the hospital grounds. Hospital has said that would be the rationale behind them supporting its existence and I think that there are some announcements along those lines will be coming forward. So.
and I think that there are some announcements along those lines will be coming forth, so stay tuned on that one.
Good. Healthy Life Center, uh, meeting tonight. Let's see, you've got a forum that you're going to. Wayne, you're gonna be with me representing the county at that Healthy Life Center meeting. That, that thing, uh, is fascinating.
I do have one other thing before you die.
Yeah, well, and I'm going to announcements next and now it's your turn.
Okay, tomorrow, uh, a special meeting of the SERPA, uh, which we call ourselves the Sub Allocation Committee is going to meet, uh, and the purpose of this meeting, uh, is that the DOT has come about with some possible changes, uh, to the sub-allocation procedure, uh, and it's primarily, uh, funding, uh, that will impact a lot of the smaller cities, uh, to, in my opinion, be the detriment of counties. And again, this is another example where we've had standing practice of, of a formula that has worked well for a number of years, but then, uh, the DOT wants to, uh, focus more on a regional, uh, scope. And, and, and even though SERPA is within our particular region, but I think this would broaden it more statewide and not necessarily in our particular region. So I've been asked to serve on that committee, Dean Yordi, that's on our, uh, Metile governance board, uh, is also representing county supervisors in that area and we'll have a, a couple of other people, uh, and I don't know if Drew, you've ever heard anything at all, did you leave on this?
Yep.
I did, okay. Regarding, uh, uh, this particular meeting, but I think it's gonna be, right now, my position is, don't change the formula, keep things as is because it's, it's in the best countries of counties not to change that formula, uh, because Herta, for example, have come to us, we've carved out some dollars where, where there has been a need and other small communities, uh, the SERPA allocation group, where they have been additional funding, have really tried to address some of the needs of, of the other counties, uh, so it'll be, I don't think we will get a final, uh, decision made, but we're gonna hear the DOT's proposal. I think we're gonna, again, as a committee, have to take that back to the full board before we actually approve, uh, which direction we're gonna take. So that's gonna happen at nine o'clock tomorrow at the, uh, DOT off, uh, at the SERPA office in Des Moines, and so I'll be representing that sub-allocation committee tomorrow.
Super. Thanks, Wayne. Any announcements?
No announcements.
All right. Seven days from today, everybody, if you haven't voted already, which many, many have, be sure you get out and vote at some point in the next seven days and what, uh, ten hours. I, if, if there's nothing further, I take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Drew, you know Angie White, you met her.